Ready?
How are you?
Good.
Ready?
Yep.
Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Trustees' Special Meeting for March 24, 2020, Building D and E. We will start the meeting by standing and due to Pledge Allegiance led by Mr. Armington. Please turn off all cell phones. We'll put them on vibrate. Please, thank you. Roll call, trustee captain, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, Chairman Klosky, are you here?
Yes.
Trustee Minow.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Comptons here. Trustee Loveland has been excused. We also have with us John Coffey, our district manager, as well as Rich Armington, our resident relations manager. And I believe that's all, but we do have a forum. A quorum, rather.
Thank you, Roger. Audience participation, anybody from the audience like to speak? I don't have no slips or nothing, so. Anybody like to speak?
Can we speak after you speak?
Yes, you can. I'm done already, so you can come up to the podium. I'm done speaking right now. Are you trying to say after we have discussions?
Yeah, say after we've done.
Yeah, you can do that after the discussion.
Okay.
You're gonna talk now, too?
Okay. Hi, I'm Susan Kincherf, resident here. Susan Kincherf, resident here. I just have a few questions for our Board of Trustees. First off, you know, we've been told through this whole thing that it's nice to be outdoors. The golf course is open, that's wonderful, but the pools are closed. I wonder why they are closed when we can actually have people there that work in the community, that have been laid off, maybe they can come back to work, and we can keep a certain number of people allowed to come into the pools, bring their own chairs, not even use the chairs of the facility, come in, exercise, give them a certain amount of time, and then they can go out and go home. And that way, people can get some exercise and be out in the fresh air, and not be next to each other and whatever, but I think people could do that. We all know how serious this is. So I'd like to see the pool opened again. Also, I'd like to know why all of the staff has been laid off. I'm really upset about that, too. We're still collecting, everything's collected this year as far as the maintenance is concerned, and we've laid off a lot of people. And if we do open up those pools, we can have them, some of them, come back to work. We could open up the 19th hole for takeout. We could also open up the lounge for takeout, the takeout window, and maybe bring some people back to work, and let them come and see how we do. I think that it would be possible to do something like that and still practice self-quarantining to a point. But that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Tori Burnston, 707 Silverthorn. I basically was going to say the exact same thing this woman said. The only point I want to bring up is I know Snug Harbor Pool is still open, and that is a 55-plus community, and I took a motorcycle ride today, and I saw quite a few pools that are open. The chairs were all spread apart, but, you know, they had people like, you know, if my husband and I were at the pool, obviously, we live together, if we sat at a table together, you know, it wouldn't be horrible. And we could wipe our own stuff down, or, like she said, just bring your own chairs, put a two-hour limit on it to exercise and get out. I would really like to see that also. And I know the beaches are not closed, but the parking is, and I don't understand the reasoning behind that when there's a lot of people that, you know, it's a long walk. And if you're gonna be on the beach anyways, why not let them park? It's a private parking lot, it's not public. So I'd like to see that parking lot open back up again for people that need to be a little closer to the beach with their fishing gear and stuff. And this virus hates the sun. Let's get everybody in the sun and spread apart. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, the reason for this special meeting is a discussion of the COVID-19 virus impact. John will give us a little briefing.
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, what briefing you want. Most people are aware, all the Mendies were closed, started with your direction last Monday. The golf course is still open, but it's on a one-person rider option, and every other tee time has been canceled to try to ensure social spacing. I'll do whatever the board wants, and we can pick which side of the aisle we want people to be mad at us on because we've all gotten a bunch of emails from people on both sides of the issue. So there is a financial element to this community, and the reason people were laid off is the assessment only covers 60% of our operations. And when you have to reduce your, well, the 19th hole loses money anyway because the structure, and that could be a whole nether meeting because we pay our people better than the private sector do. But we would bleed excessive amount of money if we tried to do takeout of the 19th hole. And before the governor shut down inside dining, in the spirit of the 50-person limit, staffing had been, the maximum capacity had been cut in half for the lounge and 19th hole, and at some point, either the board needs to meet and decide which projects we don't do going forward, or we raise a special assessment, or how we balance our books, we just can't spend our money until there's nothing left. And so if the board wants to open things back up, I just need direction.
I know last week, last weekend, I got, Friday and Thursday, I mean, Saturday and Sunday, I got about 45 phone calls, and more and more of them was, they wanted to know why the pools weren't closed, why the lounge is still open, why 19th hole, and a lot of other stuff and everything. And so I was gonna, and Monday morning, I thought Mr. Coffey would be in the office, I was sitting, talking with him and everything, and wanted to see if we can come up with closing the pools and everything, because just what the residents said. But he did, he was on sick leave at the time, and so I talked to Mr. Armington, and we did talk, he did call the attorney and everything, discussed with him and all this stuff. And then I told Mr. Armington what I liked to see done, so he did notify Mr. Coffey, and Mr. Coffey said, whatever the chairperson wanted to go along with it. So I did, I am the one that did want the pools closed because I think first, for the safety and for health-wise, and even though if you have the pools in there now open, you're not gonna, you're still gonna, if somebody has a virus or anything like that, and you're in there swimming and all that stuff, and you come out of the thing there and shower and all this stuff, and you sit in the chair, and you keep saying that, you know, you guys, that the people would wipe the chairs and everything off, I can't go along with that and just let it go that way, saying that you will do it because you might not do it. So that's why I did what I did. So I'm gonna tell you right now, I am against opening the pools right now, because right now, even on the television, they're talking about closing a lot of stuff, that they've closed and everything, so gonna put curfews on everything, so we're lucky we don't have the curfew here and everything. But as far as it goes, I'm the one that brought that up and everything, and then there was a lot of people that wanted lounge closed and a few other things there, so I don't know, it's just one of those things. I'm gonna ask each of the board members here what action they want to go with, or what they want to do. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was just going out in line, if that would be appropriate, just to go down. We all know that everybody has their own opinion about whether we should have pools open and restaurants open, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. People just don't grasp the idea that this is a very, very, very serious issue. The reason you shouldn't have any of this open is because you should be at home, you should be sheltered in place. And very soon, it's very possible that Florida will have a shelter in place. Means you don't go anywhere unless you get special permission to go to the grocery stores, to the drugstore, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They have it like that in Michigan, they have it in Wisconsin, they have it in Minnesota, they have it everywhere like that. You can't go outside and go anywhere unless you get special permission to get these things. Number two, I think that Mr. Coffey and his administration, as far as I'm concerned, has my full support that we do not open any of these amenities up until governments and CDC and everybody comes in and says this thing is over. Because there's no question it's going to get worse than it is now.
I agree with that.
And the more people you have congregated, and the more people you have touching microphones, touching anything, it's just gonna get worse. We have people right now who can't believe we're having a meeting, that the BOT is gonna meet, that the ARC is gonna meet, they just can't understand that because they know we should be sheltered in place. We're all discussing whether we're gonna do our meetings online from now on. I'm gonna make, later on, as we talk about different things, I'm not coming to many more meetings unless we do them online. I can guarantee you that. We know we have to pass a budget, and I might have to have one workshop for a budget, but other than that, I won't be coming to the meetings. So again, I'm saying this because I offer the full support for where we are right now.
Thank you. Luann?
I also agree that everything that's shut down should be, remain shut down. People think that they're not, that they're gonna stay away from each other, and they're gonna wipe down tables and all that stuff, and that's all very nice, but what about the staff? That's looking at 50 people coming in and breathing on them. I think it's only fair to everybody that they just remain closed.
Roger?
Yeah, I think we've, we've been in line with the state and the federal people. We've operated under what you might call an abundance of caution. It's better to be safe. We've got a demographic here in the Bay that could potentially be hit really hard if the virus was to get in here, into the Bay. And I think for right now, I think what we're doing is good. We meet again in two weeks. If it looks like we're on the downside of this thing, if it's not gotten worse, and we've seen some reductions in some of the other restrictions in the state and at the federal level, then I think we can review this, you know, we can review this every time we, every time we have a BOT meeting. But I think, I think right now, I think it's probably best for us to keep some pretty tight restrictions on what we have open and what we do, and how close we get, and what the kind of meetings and so on that we have. I agree, it does sound a little bit counterintuitive when we're being told that the heat and the sun and all that's the best thing for us, but yeah, we're probably best, we're probably better off at home. We can get out and get our beach chairs out and set in the sun outside if we need to. So that's, I'm okay, I'm okay with the direction we've gone. I think, I think Mr. Coffey's done a real good job of managing this, and I'm all in.
Thank you. So I know where.
Can we just, can we ask a question? Where are we on the business, John, of?
Go ahead.
We're still talking, just general discussion of coronavirus, right? This whole, the whole package, the whole deal? Is that the idea?
We're trying to keep as much open as we can. The issue, and I've heard a lot of people about the pools.
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm wondering is, where are we on the, on the things you're working on about remote access for meetings and things like that?
Remote access sounds really easy in principle. The governor, for those new to Florida, Florida has very stringent government and the sunshine law, that normal conditions, elected or appointed boards cannot meet privately. The governor issued an executive order last week giving relief to that, allowing remote meetings via telephone or web access, but it did not grant relief to the public access and entry into meetings requirement. Basically, if there was a system that the five trustees could remotely come into a meeting, either through their computers or a telephone, there still has to be the ability for the public to attend a physical site and be able to speak to the board. We did a test today before the meeting, trying to use the speakerphone for trustee Loveland, who could not come tonight. The audio clarity on a simple phone is not there. Doing a simple conference call gets into an issue of how we amplify the conference call in this room that doesn't require feedback. We're also, so we're looking at various options of either an audio or video phones. There is a different noticing requirement for that, so we have an RFP Evaluation Committee meeting on Friday. If by some miracle we found a way of doing that remotely, we couldn't do it at that meeting for everyone on that board because we didn't notice it properly. We noticed it just as a regular meeting. To do remote meetings, we have to have a special type of notice. The board would also need to adopt a rule allowing one or more trustees to attend remotely. General Counsel Repinger is gonna prepare a resolution for the April 3 meeting allowing Another item we're doing to try to help people stay abreast to board actions is there's a very, very strong likelihood that April 3's meeting will be the first of all meetings going forward that's livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So you could sit at home and watch the meeting as it happens. That doesn't give you the ability to stand up and ask the board a question or give input. So it's more complex than simply doing a conference call. The problem is, there's 400-plus municipalities in Florida, plus 100-plus special districts, and outside of the very large ones, everybody is trying to get the few web providers of these video services to implement right away. So there's a supply and demand thing. Depending how long this goes, we definitely will have something in place, it's just a matter of when, when that's possible. We're trying not to just throw money at the first thing we see because these platforms, web-based platforms, they're not interested in selling this business for 30 or 60 days. They want annual contracts. And quite frankly, when this crisis is over, we'll probably not have any remote meetings again because the governor's executive order will expire. So we are trying very quickly to get something that's feasible. I've worked here six and a half years, and short of having conference calls with the attorney or prospective vendors, we've never had a need for a conference call, and that's why we don't have the service on hand now.
So we can't do, there's no way we can do a conference call for a meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we can do a conference call, we have to make sure that if you're doing the conference call, it can be like the pedestal that you've seen in conference meetings. It can pick up the audiences, the audiences comment, and it can also be heard by the audience. That's part of the challenge because typically, conference calls are people sitting around the table. As we're all seated tonight, the last thing we want to do in this pandemic is get everybody crowding around the table to listen to a speakerphone. So that's where the challenge is right now, but it's something that we are working on because, you know, no one enjoys having 23 seats in the audience and making folks sit outside, and we understand the people who don't want to come to meetings out of concerns.
John, just for my clarification, when you talk about using the YouTube platform, I like that because there's already more people who watch this meeting on YouTube than watch it here, so they're familiar with it. It's, it will be easy for them to access and to use it. But, but if we do that, if we, if we video, if we livestream this through YouTube, do we still have to allow the public to come into the room? Or can we make that their only option?
If there, if there was a way that YouTube people could, could feed back a question, it's, the issue of just having the livestream is there's no ability for someone to participate from the public.
Except maybe there is, if, because our agendas go out a week early, there's the opportunity for the public to review those agendas and, and forward those questions, either to one of the trustees or to you in the office, to be, to be read and to be addressed to whatever extent we typically would address them.
Yeah.
I mean, really, we don't address those questions here, we listen to them, and then we move on.
And really, the only part, the only legal part of our meeting is the public participation for three minutes. It's, we don't have a meeting with the public, we have a meeting in public, and they have the opportunity to participate for three minutes.
Yeah.
And so if you could some way come up with a thing where that part is taken care of.
Well, and Mr. Repinger, you can speak to him personally, or he'll be here on the The, using trustee Compton's suggestion, what you, you could do, getting closer to meeting the public access and right of entry, is if you had, say, Mr. Armington had his computer there and someone would email him the question, he could possibly re-mail the question. That's getting very gray area that Cliff really should be opining on versus me relaying his comments, but it's, it, from my understanding of conversations with him last week and today, requiring the trust, requiring the public to submit their questions before the meeting starts doesn't meet the intent of the state law.
But that YouTube streaming does have the capability of allowing the person from their location to ask real-time questions?
If there's a way for them to communicate into the meeting room.
Well, they would be, because it would come to, it would come to our system here. I mean, we would be able to read those, we would be able to read, they would, they would type in a question and send it to us via the, via the livestream, and it would come up and scroll up on the screen, and then you have the chance to, to read that and answer. A quick question to trustee Minow. In the event that this would work, and we could have the livestream with what's going on here, and the audience viewed it from their home or some other location where the audience wasn't in the room, would you feel safe then actually attending this meeting that was just this group separated with this distance, having things wiped down before we came in?
That's, that's, that's just an excellent point, Roger. Yes, I would. I could attend meetings if it was the board.
I think it would be better, for me.
I was shocked today, when I came today and saw all the people here, I just thought, oh my God, I hope they're not in the room. So you're right, yes, that would be very.
I mean, I've been in many video and, and audio conferences, and it's just not the same if you can't look across the table and, and look at each other face-to-face and have your discussion.
But I'm also thinking about, again, if one or two of us do not want to come, let's say Mr. Loveland can't come or does not want to be attending at these meetings, I still think, you know, I, I ran many, many, many meetings with the public in attendance, and we had conference calls for one board member, let's say, who was not present at our meeting. So we still let them come in on the conference call, and so people could hear them. You're right, all the people in the audience couldn't hear everything they said, but again, he was speaking to the board, is what you're speaking to. That's what we're speaking to, is the board members.
And I think that's.
So I still think if, if we do something like this, we still should have something set up so maybe Mr. Loveland could have input into the meetings.
And I think that would be, to have one or person, one or two people have that input would be a lot simpler than trying to have the whole community on that, on that line listen to it.
Even, even if you have that, on YouTube or whatever, somebody has to be here, though, right? John, isn't that right? Somebody, there has to be like three people, three trustees here.
Well, we're talking, though, that we probably would be here, but the audience wouldn't be here.
Well, I know what I'm just saying, like you said you weren't gonna, but, but somebody has to be here.
And that YouTube, if we, if we use that platform, I think it's something we can largely do in-house. You can correct me, John, I don't think there's a lot of expense with equipment, or, I mean, it's a, it's a fairly simple thing to put in place and do it relatively quickly also. Is that a good?
Yeah, I just was checking with our AV guy, and we weren't discussing the viewers typing the questions back in aspect, but we believe we can go livestream at the 3rd. We'd like to do a test run on it before the meeting. But to answer Ms. Henderson's question, theoretically, under the governor's executive order, zero trustees could be present if everyone was dialed in on either a video platform or an audio platform. There would need to be someone here to help facilitate the onsite people, but zero elected officials have to be in the room.
But if we could turn this into a safe environment for the trustees and for the staff?
I definitely think it's something, though, that you've got to look at doing, because I think, again, I don't, I'm not a doctor, I don't know these things, but I'm telling you, from everything we see in here, from states that are getting ready to declare martial law, this is going to get worse.
Oh, I agree with you.
And I'm not gonna come and have 25 or 50 people opening those doors up there and having me come in and opening the doors after them. So we gotta look at something.
I'm fine, but the last thing I'll say about Mr. Repinger, he said we could not have a meeting of the trustees in a room that was sealed off to the public. You probably should have the rest of the conversation with him, but that was his guidance to me earlier today.
Yeah, just real quick, Rick Burnston, 920 Cashew. I was sitting up there thinking just what Roger was saying when I walked in, that why can't the meeting be happening like you are now? Everything's kind of separated. I know what you're saying, Mike, about the doors being contaminated, but there's, doors can be left open, it's getting to that time of the year where it's warmer, at least for a couple of months, so you guys can still move on with your business, you know, with everybody's safety in mind. I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Well, that takes care of that, right? Great discussion. It was a good discussion.
The question is, bring it up, I know, we're also here to discuss about what are we gonna do with the employees that got laid off, what do you want to do with, with them? And if you want to talk about that, bring it up.
The employees that are laid off are gonna be able to collect unemployment, that's right.
Yes, they'll be able to collect unemployment.
Well, after they use up their, after they use up their accrued time.
If, yes.
Well, Florida might be different, okay. Florida might be different. I don't think I had to, but, okay. But even so, they'll be able to collect unemployment, the people that were laid off, right? And we still have, what about a third of the staff still working, correct? Is it a third?
Slightly more than 50%. We had 115 employees two weeks ago, and we have about 65 now.
And 65 that are still working, are they getting pretty much their hours?
65, right?
65.
65.
Well, all right, whatever, 65.
Correct. A few are on, some slightly reduced hours, like administrative staff and still in resident relations, we're only open, the building's only open four days a week, so there's some people, instead of getting 40 hours a week, might be getting less than 40.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Roger.
No, go ahead.
Again, you know, I discussed this with John a little bit, and probably the biggest concern that I emailed a number of people today who, who email me, residents, and saying, why are you people even meeting? And the biggest concern I told them I had was, what are we going And the biggest concern I told them I had was, what are we going to do with our staff? You know, again, I'm someone who had 1,000, 2,000 people work for you, for me, and the biggest concern you always had was, how is your staff making it? How are they making it? Not my administrators, but I'm talking about the bus drivers and all the rest of the people. Now, we're talking about cooks, we're talking about bartenders, we're talking about custodial people, pool hosts, and I understand that some of those people may be working just to bring in a couple of extra dollars, but I still believe that the majority, I don't know this, I would think the majority of the people are working because they depend on this money. That they may be retired, they may be getting some social security, they may be getting a pension. It may not be as good as everybody else's, but they're working because they need the money. In a situation like this, I know we have 49 people laid off, some of them have, if I read this correctly, John, it's like they have a couple of days accrued leave, the guy at the bottom is a couple of days, all the way up to maybe two, three weeks, or something like that?
One of my things is 13 weeks. I don't have, we'll have 13.
Well, okay, right at the end, but I'm looking up to where it goes to 2.61, et cetera, so they might have a couple of weeks. You know, in this, in the Bay, we have fixed costs, we have employee costs, we have supply costs for operating the different facilities we have, but most of them are employee costs, salary costs, supply costs, insurance costs. And then we end up taking whatever's left over, and we go and we say, we're going to now do some new project, capital project. We're going to put a roof on here, we're going to put a lounge expansion on, we're going to put a green on, oh, no, wait, we're not putting the green on. We're going to do, come on, everybody laugh, come on. We're going to do some things with the rest of the money. Okay? I mean, it's a simplified way of saying it, but that's basically what this budget is. And so what I'm saying is that I still feel it's the most important thing here, that during a crisis like this, which it is a crisis, no fault of the employee, we're not doing this for financial reasons, we're not laying them off because we're trying to cut out of $5.6 million, something, $5.6 million out of a budget or something. I think we have to look at something for the employees who are laid off, and I think we have to look at something for employees who may be laid off if, in fact, the governor comes down with this quarantine. I'm not sure, I think they should use up all their accrued time. I'm not sure you pay them their full two weeks, but maybe there's part of that we do, maybe it's a stipend based on the number of hours they worked during the last paycheck. Maybe it's something that would get them through the next couple of weeks until we see where we are.
So actually, what we're here is, you're going to come up with something of how much you want to give them? I'm just saying.
Well, John told me.
250, maybe 500, 1,000, what do you want to do?
Well, John said, I think, John, you told us that the 35,000 would be for the new employees that would be laid off, if they were laid off, correct?
That would be for the existing non-department managers if we had to go to a two-week quarantine.
Right, that's basically the other 65 people, right. And so now we've got the 49 who are already off, and I think you then said if we put all of them together, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, believe me, because we talked, if we put all of them together, we're talking about another 18, 19,000 in payroll for those people? So we're talking 35, 45, $55,000, correct? I mean, if you generally said a two-week payroll would be that for all of those 100 and however many people. Again, do we want to look at continuing with projects, all the projects that we're doing right now, and let these people possibly, possibly have some type of financial hardship during this crisis that is not of their doing? Or do we want to come up with something fairly close to what they were doing for the next two weeks? That's my question.
Trustee Minow, do I understand that what you're proposing is that we give every employee who's been laid off two weeks of their salary, whatever that salary averaged in 2019?
If I understand this, if you look at this, and someone on the bottom, they have, maybe they got a half a day, I'm not sure how many hours a day or a week those people work. It might be very minimal, correct? And I don't, we don't have all of that information, what our staff does, so, yeah, you're right, Mr., I'm saying that we have to look at those people right now, and I'm not against it, but I'm not in favor of giving them, use up their accrued time for something that was not, is because of this virus. I think we have to come up with something for those people for the next two weeks.
Mr. Armington?
Mr.
I'm sorry.
My question there, oh, go ahead.
People who are on a layoff status and people who are drawing on unemployment, let's say that I went tomorrow and I filed for unemployment, and then a week from now, or two weeks from now, I received a check for, or maybe in two consecutive weeks, I received a check for my full weekly typical pay from Barefoot Bay. How will that affect my unemployment? Or is it going to, am I going to lose, are they just going to take the unemployment away for those two weeks?
Before you answer that, Rich, I think it takes them, right now, wouldn't it take them even three weeks just to get unemployment?
The first week, what happens is, when you sign up, your benefits will begin the first Sunday after you sign up, but you have to give a week, and then they kick in. If you're collecting unemployment right now, you can make up to $58 a week and still collect your full employment, your full unemployment check. Anything you make over $58, they're going, and they're not going to deduct dollar for dollar, there's a percentage, and I can't even begin to tell you what it is, but you'll start losing benefits. We have, everybody signed, or tried to sign up, I assume, so they've tried to sign up, and what's going to happen is, I get a form. My form says, was there any severance? And then what'll happen is, every two weeks, I'm going to get another form from the state. It's going to ask me, have they worked at all? Have I paid them? Have we given them anything? And if we give them more than the $58, then they'll start losing benefits. So it's, and there's formulas they use that I can't even begin to tell you how they do it, but I will get a form on every person that files. I have to fill it out, and I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so, again, for clarification, then, after $58, whatever we pay, is money lost that the state would otherwise pay them?
And it's not dollar for dollar, but it is money that the state would have been given to them.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, that's a problem I have with it. Is there a way around that? Is there, can we call it something different?
No, because I have to check where they paid out benefits or accrued time that they have accrued. Was there a severance package? There's, any money that was paid to them, I have to report.
Okay.
So I'd be, no matter what you call it, you're still going to have, it still has to be reported.
Yeah, and we're going to be.
Rich, you're talking $58 for every two weeks? Is that what you're talking, a week?
A week.
And that's for, no matter how much you made, or how much you worked, or whatever?
Yeah, because the unemployment is, I think, $279.
But you get it based on what you were working, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So if we want to do something, really, our cap is $58 a week without essentially replacing the money the state was going to give them anyway, is that right? So.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, I don't know if $58 sounds like a whole lot, but it does for somebody, I'm sure, that's making $8 or $10 an hour. Do we want to consider paying, paying somebody, let's say that you've worked here for a year, pay that additional $58 for three weeks? If you've worked here two years, pay that for three weeks and have a scale where it would top out at like five years? I mean, what I'm hearing is, that's really all we, that's the most we can pay somebody without affecting their unemployment.
Without affecting, yes. Luanne?
Well, I just want to ask Mike something. You're talking about paying these people for two weeks, the two weeks that the governor's talking about?
We're talking about a possible quarantine.
What, no, no, I know that, but I mean, you're talking paying people for two weeks, and then?
Well, I was just going by two weeks, because it's normally a two-week, do we pay every week, or do we go two-week cycles?
Every two weeks.
Two weeks, that's why I was using two weeks.
So after the first two weeks, then you want to pay them again? I mean, you want to keep paying people? That's what I'm asking. No, no, I'm not trying to be wise.
Actually, what I'd like to see is, you have to have a limit here, how high you want to go, how much you want to actually give each one of these employees. Notice, if you give one, you got to give each one the same amount, the ones that are laid off.
Well, not necessarily, because if one makes more than another.
Are we talking about the people that are laid off? We're talking about people that are working now. I mean, what, I'm not, maybe I got lost in the shuffle here. We talking about $58, I understand that $58 for the people that are laid off, but are we talking about paying people that are still working now, paying them for those two weeks that the governor's talking about shutting down, and then not paying them?
Not the people who are working.
I believe there's two distinct issues being melded here. There's the discussion of possible compensation for those laid off, and that's where the $58 a week is being talked about. And then there's the discussion if, in the future, the governor orders a two-week shutdown where everybody in Barefoot Bay, including ABM, cannot come to work, how do you want us to treat on that? Because if there's no decision by the board, people will be forced to use their accruals if there's not work for them to do. And part-time people probably won't get a full paycheck because they tend to get two vacation hours a month, or is it a pay period, something like that. It's very small compared to full-time people. So there's two separate issues that are being blended here.
Okay, so can we talk about one issue at a time, so I don't get lost in the shuffle? So the people that are laid off, this could go on forever. I mean, this could go on, you want to pay them $58 for the two weeks that they're, that the governor's going to shut down? Because we're pretty sure he's going to shut it down. But are you talking about that, or are you talking about $58 until everybody goes back to work?
I think what I'm kind of suggesting is that we cover that $58, which is the max that we can give them without affecting their unemployment, that we scale it, and for every year worked, you do that for two weeks, up to five weeks. So if some, I'm sorry, up to five years. So if somebody's been with us for five years, we'll pay that max that we can give them for 10 weeks.
$58, oh, wait, that's without getting penalized.
Without them being penalized, yes.
Then it would say it's 10 weeks, so that means it'd be $580. Is that how you're going?
Unless they come, unless we're able to bring them back sooner.
Okay, I see. So in other words, the most they can get is $580. If it's, if somebody that's five, here's five years, you double that, make it 10, so it'd be, it's for 10 weeks, so it'd be 10 times, okay. And if somebody's here for two years, it'd be?
Be four weeks.
Four weeks.
Now, just to add some more complexity to an already complex discussion, if you wanted to do that, the $58 a week would not start for everybody at the same time, because while this chart, most people within the first two weeks are going to exempt their, are going to use up all their accruals, each person has a distinctly different separation date for their layoff, and that's where the $58 would start. So I just want that out in the record, so if the employee with 3.10 weeks vacation doesn't get their $58 from us when everybody else gets it, they understand that we're, we can't pay the $58 until they're actually separated.
But all of these people weren't, they weren't all laid off at the same time, the 49?
They were, but it's the email I've sent you all, I've, instead of cashing them out as we do when someone quits or is fired, we allowed people to run out their accruals. Some folks get sensitive about getting a bunch of extra money unexpected in the so-called tax.
Right, I understand. So how many, Rich, do you have any idea how many people have applied for unemployment that we've laid off, roughly?
There was only about maybe eight or nine that just didn't care whether they got paid, collected unemployment. We did a census on that, so right now, I'm starting to get the paperwork back, but I would say probably 80% of them are going to apply, but some just didn't want to bother. They do this because they just want some spending money, and they didn't think it was worth it for them to collect.
Really?
It's a small number, you know, maybe 10, but.
10 so far?
That didn't, yeah. I think I have four or five back already, because when we started, there were things that were still working, that weren't open before, so you had some people from the, you had some people from the 19 pool that were still working, where the lounge was closed, so that's why their separation dates are, you know, there won't be a big difference, but there's probably, I don't know, seven to 10-day difference maybe between the first layoff and the last one.
Do we, again, trying to understand all of this, do we have an idea, either you or John, what are, what are the, what employees, the least number of hours a week do some of these people work? How many hours a week?
12.
12. And the most part-time works, 35?
Most part-time is somewhere 25 to 28.
28.
Well, if you're only working 12 hours and you get $58, that's doubled your pay for the week.
Yeah.
Eric? Eric Van Boshad, 379 Dolphin, I'm also an employee of the lounge and food and beverage. I am one of these blessed people that don't need to have the extra income to make, as John said, a complex situation doubly more complex. For us who are not necessarily needing to have that unemployment, can we put together some side charity that our monies could go into a pool and then could be given to the needier employees without a ramification to H&R? Does that make any sense whatsoever?
Yes, and according to Mr. Repinger, we have to, if we're going to pay laid-off employees, we have to pay everyone the exact same.
But Eric, that would not.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That would not stop you and those people from coming together as individuals and working that issue. We're fortunate enough here in the Bay right now, we've got Holy Cannoli, we've got the RJ's, we've got the CVO, we've got a lot of private individuals who are doing what they can to help the people who may need the assistance. And I think if you and people in your situation would jump in there and take part in that, and if you want to contribute that money, I think that would be great.
Again, I agree. I think it's a great idea. A question, if you don't mind, so you work in the lounge, correct?
I am a bartender at the lounge.
In the lounge, and you have, you know all the other people, I'm not talking about, I don't want to get into names or people, but you know the people who work around here. Are majority of the people like you?
No.
Or are these people saying, oh, my God, what am I going to do with all this income for two weeks?
More people are that.
And that's, I guess that's my point, is that I appreciate the fact that there are people like you, and that some of these people are just doing it to pass the time, maybe. I don't mean that's you, but I mean, they don't really need the income, but I've had enough people, employees, over the years, who, if they were to miss two weeks of a paycheck, they're in trouble. And I just can't see doing that for this. I don't care if it's $58, or if you pay them their two-week salary, and you come up with 16, 17,000, whatever it is, I don't even know how much it is. I guess I just can't see us putting people in that position.
Mike, 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 one second, please. Don't, don't get, you're getting upset, don't get upset. I think we're going to take care of this.
I'm not upset, Luanne, I know exactly what I'm doing.
Well, no, yeah, well, I think you are.
I know exactly what I'm doing.
Eric?
I don't.
Eric, about how many people are in the same position as you that are well out, that don't really, if they?
I think Rich is right. There's a handful of us that are in a situation where we don't need the extra money.
About 10? Could it be about 10?
I would never in a million years give you that information, because I wouldn't know.
Okay.
But my guess is less than more. Also, you have to understand that bart- But my guess is less than more. Also, you have to understand that bartenders, servers, and those people, we get paid an hourly rate of five dollars and thirty-five cents to five dollars and eighty-five cents because we're tipped-based employees.
Sure.
We don't even make minimum wage. So when we get a check from unemployment, these people are going to get tiny, miniscule amounts of money because it's only a percentage of what they get in their check, and the tips aren't shown. So that becomes a little bit more difficult. Does that, any of that make sense?
That's an important, yeah, yeah. So-
I, I, well, I, we can't make a decision today anyway, but I think we should, um-
We're not?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we want to do.
We could make a decision.
I think we could because it's not official.
Question here is, what, you want to go with the fifty-eight, what it is, the fifty-eight dollars, and you're like-
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Per Mr. Repinger's advice, you can make a decision, but you do need to adopt this by resolution at an advertised meeting.
So you won't be able to vote on it until the next meeting?
You can vote on it, but you'll have to vote on it again because you have to adopt this by resolution.
But could you move forward on it prior to the resolution adoption?
No.
Raj, Raj, in other words, you're going here up to five, five years. In other words, if somebody that's here one year, you're going to double it to two years. Somebody that's two years is four, and like up to five, up to ten. Is that ten weeks? Is that the way you're counting it?
I, I mean, I'm just putting that out there.
Okay.
Are you, you're talking about fifty-eight dollars a week, right?
Yeah, so if you, if somebody that's for one year, so that's be a hundred and six, that would be a hundred and sixteen dollars for them. And then somebody that's here five years, that'd be five hundred and eighty dollars. So I don't know how, uh-
I mean, it's not a lot of weekly money. Honestly, I wouldn't mind doing three weeks per full year or something.
Another question is, I don't know if this will affect the thing of, would, what, I, looking at, I don't know, maybe there's money, but what projects would you?
So, so again, just to understand, so we're talking about forty-nine employees at fifty-eight dollars, so we're talking twenty-eight hundred dollars a week, right? That would cost us.
And that will go down each week because every employee hasn't been here as long. I mean, every-
But, but what are you, are you saying then that if someone's only been here a certain number, and they only get three weeks, and this goes until July, we're just going to let them go then?
Well, I, I mean, I'm just trying to set some kind of brand.
No, I'm just insane, is that what?
Yeah, what I'm, what I proposed was that for every full year that you've worked here, we cover that for two weeks. The fifty-eight dollars. Or, or if you want to go three weeks with it, or, or, you know, whatever that number is. But I, I think that somebody who's been with us for five years or more deserves a little more care from us than somebody that's been here for, for a year.
I understand. Go ahead. Again, there's two, and it's, it's something, I guess, I didn't understand. I, I thought we were going to decide this tonight. I didn't understand that we were not going to do this. So I guess it's a moot point. But I, I do appreciate Roger's proposal kind of thing. The only other proposal I would look at would be, and I'm not saying it as a proposal, but just continue, at the time being, continue their salary for two weeks that are laid off. No. If you just want to go with fifty-eight, I guess the idea would be if we can't decide it, we have to go and ask John and, and the financial people to work this up and see how it would come out for the next meeting.
So now you're trying to say that those employees that are laid off, find out what their two-week salary is and give them that salary?
I mean, you know, some of these people, it's not a lot of money. I mean-
We can, we can affirm it tonight by motion-
Yes.
So that it can be prepared, and then we finalize it. It should be very quick in our next meeting, right? To finalize that motion with a official vote?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I think that's what we need to do. We need to, to say we're going to, if, if the governor shuts it down, we'll pay the people for two weeks. And, and the people that are unemployment will pay some kind of scale on maybe your scale, whatever. The fifty-eight dollars to cover what, you know, da-da-da-da, that they could make, and then the next meeting, we say this is what we're going to do and vote on it and be done. Do we have to have a resolution? Do we, do we have to-
See, I understand, but if you're going to go by the, give them, give them whatever they earn in two weeks, they eat those, the salary for two weeks.
What's that?
If somebody earns, okay, you want to pay them for the two-week salary, in other words, so somebody that's working here for a two-week pay, they get, okay, they get only twelve, twelve hours, that's twenty-four hours for two weeks, so it comes to probably maybe, I'm just going, I'll just try to say roughly a hundred, I'm just saying a hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, somebody that's here, that's got, uh, gets twenty or twenty-five, twenty-eight hours, so that's, that's, Rich, is that twenty-eight hours a week they would be working?
Some of them, but-
Part-time, so in other words-
Most of our layoffs that occurred, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to be probably the tipped employee range. We have a few cooks, but, but, um, they're pretty much all in the tipped range at five, six, five, seven hours.
So, so their unemployment is going to be minimal?
Very.
Very minimal. So, so again-
I don't have the, I wish I had-
I understand.
It also depends on how much of their tips they reported. If they reported all their tips, their unemployment could be more. We do ensure that the employees declare sufficient tips because there's a federal law that if a tipped employee over the average of their work schedule, say six hours, doesn't get enough tips to bring them up to the three dollars and two cents difference between non-tipped and tipped minimum wage, that the employer has to kick it in. So we make sure they report a minimum of that, but it's between each employer and their make, I mean, each tipped employee and their maker if they're accurately reporting their tips.
So if you got a bartender or even a wait, waitress or something, and they get in twelve hours a week, so that's twenty-four hours in two weeks, that's five, I'm just going at five dollars an hour, so that would be a hundred and twenty dollars they would get.
So, so, yeah.
And how long would you, uh-
Well, that was my question, I guess. I, I guess I, as I thought about this and proposed this, I'm more concerned right now with the fact that we laid off forty-nine people, and for the next couple of weeks, they're not going to have any income coming in. I, I understand they could use their accrual and all of those, but, you know, things could change in two weeks. Things could change in three weeks. And, and I guess I was more concerned with right now, we took a drastic step, we closed the pools. All of the people think these are drastic things, and we also laid off forty-nine people because we closed all those things. And I was simply saying, is there some way we can simply pay them their two weeks until we get more information on what's going on?
Well, they'll have a check coming, right? They, they'll have a check coming in two weeks.
They probably have one coming, thing, they, they have one coming, but then after that, they won't be having anymore.
Right, but, but by the time, they'll, they'll get that check from us, and by the time they would have normally got another check from us, they'll get their unemployment check.
My, my question is, what do you, how long, if you're going to go with the bartenders, I'm just saying the bartenders, so I said they get a hundred and twenty every two weeks, that's what they would get for the thing.
Yes.
So for how many weeks would you want to go with that?
Well, again, I'm, I, you know, Roger may be right. I mean, they may be getting a check and, and they may be coming. I, I guess there, there's a period after that maybe where they're not going to then. So do we want to say, okay, if things are still the way they are, we're going to continue their salary for two weeks. That's what I'm saying. Just two weeks at a time I'm talking, until we figure out what's going on. I'm not talking about doing this until June.
So now, let's, whatever you decide, I need a, I need a motion, somebody to make a motion on what you want to do.
Well, I don't want to make a motion if, if, if we're not, if we're having a discussion here. I don't want this to be shut down and say we're not going to do something. I guess we, we need to make sure, are we, do we think that this could be something, again, these are tipped people, and even if they go on unemployment, they're not going to make probably anything close to what they were making because of the tips. So, yeah, my proposal is that at some, if they have two weeks coming, paycheck, then fine, we pay them that, and if we're still in this business after that, we continue and give them their next two-week check, based on what they were making.
But still, you know, you still have to make some kind of a motion.
Well, I'm saying that. I'll make the motion.
Okay, so make the motion.
But I thought we can't do it tonight, John. John?
Yeah, you can do it tonight.
I guess before I do that, what is your recommendation? What are you looking for us to do? You're just going to, I mean, are we just up to us, or you have something you think we should do?
The, the board ultimately has to set the policy for this community. If the, if the board wishes to provide additional compensation, my only guidance would be to start thinking about how to either make up the revenue or reduce future expenditures because at some point we have to balance the budget.
But, and I understand that, but we're not destitute either. I mean, we have a very healthy fund balance. We're in a crisis situation.
You have a, you all endorsed a five-year plan in January that called for borrowing money to accomplish projects through this year and borrowing over a million dollars next year. You have much more appetite for projects than you have money right now.
Right, and, and, and I understand that, and I think that has to be a consideration of what of the two are the most important at some point.
Raj?
Mike, again, I might be a little confused. Are you, are you proposing that for all of the laid-off people, that we pay them, continue to pay them for two weeks?
Yes, and, and I'm not saying we give them a check tomorrow because if you're right, if they are getting a check, their two-week check coming yet, so they haven't been without income. But they are going to be at some point, and I would say if this is still going on at that point, yes, we would pay them what their regular salary would be, those forty-nine people, part-time people, for two weeks.
And you, and you-
And then in two weeks, you're going to go do, we're going to go through this again, that you want to pay them if, if this-
We're, we're going to try to find out what is going on at that time.
But I'm saying, if this goes on for another two months, then every two weeks, we're going to, is that what you want, I mean, I'm asking, is that what you want to do?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we will evaluate things like they're doing right now, week by week, and we'll take a look then at where we are, and then we may have to make some different decisions.
But you, you, you get that when we, when we pay them for two weeks, that effectively delays their ability to claim unemployment. At some point, there's going to be a delay between what we're paying them and when their unemployment starts.
I, I understand, but they're-
If you give them the, if you give them the two weeks, and like I said, uh, bartenders or even the servers, waitresses, I go in at twenty-four hours at five dollars an hour, that I'm just going, that's the lowest I'll go, that's a hundred and twenty. So they got to claim, file that as, with the unemployment, that they got that, so that's going to hurt them.
What I'm trying to say is that we don't, we don't need them to file for unemployment if we do this for at least a two-week period after they get their check. And then if things are different and if we decide that we financially can't do anything else, at least we made an effort to, to do something for these people because we closed the place down.
So I need the board to come up with some, go ahead, John.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to beat a dead horse, but Mr. Repinger said that you needed to adopt anything dealing with the laid-off employees by resolution. This is a payroll week, so be mindful that you meet on the third. You, you can do this, but every, it's just not the people who have short accruals running out. You're paying everybody the two weeks that they, they're not working, and you're, the question's going to be interesting because the two weeks technically will end before the April 3rd's meeting. So you're going to be always catching in arrears of this issue at the rate you're going.
So, so what is, so what would you suggest? I mean, what was it to be the way to do it?
I'm just saying, understand that according to Cliff, you can't, we cannot pay the people who are on the layoff list the additional two weeks until after April 3rd. Just understand that because from my, hearing your conversation, it doesn't seem to be that some of you are understanding that, and, you know, I'm sorry Cliff couldn't be here tonight, but, uh-
When, when do they get paid again, John?
This is, uh, this week is a payroll week.
This week, uh, this week ends the payroll. Twenty-ninth is the last day of the payroll.
Oh, I have that wrong.
So, and so these people who, who are laid off are, will have a half of a payroll coming maybe, or, because they're not working this week, correct?
That's about that.
Yeah, so they would maybe have a half of the payroll, and they would get that then on the following week?
They would get that on, on the second.
Second of April.
That, what day is that?
Thursday.
The Thursday.
Oh, okay, so it's like the following, okay. Okay, again, well, so, so is this something you're suggesting we simply put up until the third to see if we do something?
I'm not suggesting. I'm telling you, your legal counsel says you cannot instruct staff to start paying the laid-off people unless you do it by resolution. If you'd like, I can step out and get him on the conference call and he can speak to Mr., the chairman if you would like.
I, I would be happy waiting until the third because I'd like to, and maybe we already know what this would, what this is going to cost us.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that because they're going to get at least part of a payroll, okay?
Yeah, I think, I think if we wait, I think because it's a issue that's, everybody's upset about, that we need to, we need to back it off of it. And maybe, think about it, bring it back on the third, and then, you know, we can decide what to do then. I mean, I'm not against paying people, but I think we need to think about this and just, you know, look into what it actually is going to mean. So I think we should do what to do.
It'll also give us a chance to get some community feedback also.
Right, yeah, I, I think that we need to table it.
So you want to put it on the April 3rd agenda?
Yeah, we needed an agenda thing for the third.
Okay, I need a, need some, is that what you want to go with? You want to instruct staff to do anything or what?
I would just like to know what, what it's going to cost to, to do it.
That's what you're asking? Do you want to get an answer from the staff and what, what it's going to cost?
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like for that to be on the, on the agenda, the, the booklet, the material that we have to review before the budget so that it can be published or put out there for people.
Okay. There anything else the board wants to discuss?
Well, we got, we got that email.
Do you need a, do you need a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, is there anything else you want to?
Wait, 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 wait.
No.
Don't we, don't we want to talk about the, um, the re-roofing projects and stuff? Do we, do we want to do that?
That would have, if we don't, you're going to have, you're going to have an, an April 3rd meeting. We are going to have a-
So, so you just want to hold all this stuff until April 3rd?
This can be brought up, be on the agenda for the April 3rd thing there.
Okay, fine.
Anything else that you bring up, or are you just happy with everything? I guess so. John, anything? You're okay? Rich? If you, then if we're done with, I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
Meeting adjourned.
Can I make a closing statement? Thank you for all the consideration for our people. They're my great friends, and I want to do whatever they can for them. Thank you for doing whatever you can for them. Thank you for doing whatever you can for them.